This conference will now be recorded.
Thank you. So today is Wednesday, November 4th, 2020. I'd like to call this evening's city council meeting to order. If we could all please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic, to its standing standards, one nation under God, individual liberty, justice for all. Could I have the roll call?
Councilmember Boff?
Here.
Councilmember Williams?
Present.
Councilmember Strobin?
He's absent and excused.
Thank you. Councilmember Servini?
Present.
Mayor Thornton?
Present. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. If there are no requests for any items to be removed, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved?
A second.
And moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion kept. Thank you. Next on the agenda is citizens' public comment. Clerk, do we have any comments this evening?
Yes, we have one public comment tonight. This is from Candy Irish. My question is, has the city stopped sending out the notification notices of upcoming meetings? I realize this has been a rather stressful week for all, and I may have missed the reader board announcement, if there was one. But I have not received any notification of tonight's meeting. We signed up and received these notifications regularly in the past, and it is alarming. It is alarming that we received nothing about this one. Also, it would be nice if we received the notification when the packets are sent out to the council. Equally of concern is that this meeting is not being held on the regular scheduled meeting day of the month. Most of us look for such meetings on the second and fourth Wednesday, so many may not know this meeting is occurring. Thank goodness we have citizens that are vigilant and post such important things on other social media. Thank you for your attention to this concern. That's all.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, just a quick comment on that. The reason we're having the meeting this evening, and we've changed the schedule, is to accommodate the Thanksgiving holiday. So yeah, in order to get two meetings in this month, we changed the schedule. We started talking about that with the council back in September, I believe. And then, of course, the schedule changed a little bit in December as well, and I'll talk about that in just a few minutes. So next is the mayor's report. I do have a few things to share with the council this evening. First of all, next Wednesday, May 11th, is Veterans Day, and the city offices will be closed Veterans Day. And of course, that's the day that we honor all those that have served and are serving our country in the armed forces. I think we should honor the people that are serving every day, but let's pay special attention on Veterans Day and anybody that you know or see that's has either served or serving in the armed forces, please extend them their gratitude. Next, I want to share with the council is a press release that was actually published on October 30th. And this is for the vacant city council position, and I'm going to go ahead and read this press release. And this was published on October 30th of 2020. "The City of La Center is accepting applications to fill the unexpired term of city council position number two. The remainder of this council term runs until December 31st, 2021. The person chosen may run for office for the following term. If five council members serve as a legislative body for the city, the council meets on the second and fourth Wednesday of each month. In compliance with state law, qualified candidates must be a citizen of the United States, a registered voter, and have resided within the city limits for at least one year prior to the appointment. Interested person should submit an application and letter of interest. Applications will be accepted until 5:00 PM on November 18th, 2020, and can be found on the city's website. The city council will review applicants, conduct appropriate interviews, select the person either December 2nd or either the December 2nd or December 16th, 2020 city council meeting. And those applications, again, are available on the city website. Also, I just want to remind everybody that tomorrow evening, Thursday, November 5th, at 6:00 PM, I will be conducting a virtual town hall. And you can get the link to that town hall on the city website. Also, this evening, we have a work session scheduled for Open Public Meetings Act training, as well as the Public Records Act training. Unfortunately, councilmember Strobin had to travel back east today. He sent me a text message early this morning. So I canceled that, and we will reschedule it. One option that is available to us is the city attorney on December 8th will be providing that training to the planning commission. And if the council would like, we can coordinate that with the planning commission and do the training along with the planning commission on December 8th. And I believe that training's going to start at 5:30. I will be able to confirm that after next Tuesday. So council, any thoughts on doing the training with the planning commission on December 8th?
That makes sense.
Yeah, I think it works. We could be just fine.
No, that's fine, or we can do it in front of another meeting. This works really well also.
Okay, well, I'll confirm that with everyone. Like I say, right now, it's potentially scheduled for December 8th at 5:30 PM. I'll confirm that and send out emails to all the council members. And that is a Tuesday evening. And again, just to remind everyone that the next city council meeting will be Wednesday, November 18th at 6:30. And we will be having a work session prior to that city council meeting. And then the two meetings in December, the first one will be December 2nd, and then the second one will be December 16th. So, and that's for consideration of Thanksgiving and Christmas. That's all I have this evening. On the agenda is the attorney's report.
Good evening, Mayor, council, members of the public. What I'm going to do tonight is a little unrelated to the business of the city of La Center, but I'd like to just take a few minutes and try and give you an overview of what I anticipate the most significant challenges, legal challenges, will be in this presidential election. I can't possibly review every legal challenge. There's actually over 300 lawsuits that have been filed in 45 states related to the election, and it's rapidly evolving. There were three lawsuits filed today by the president. But what I really would like to focus on is the legal challenge that has been raised in three states, in Pennsylvania, North Carolina, and Wisconsin. And the reason that I would choose those is, one, as an attorney, I think the challenges raised in those states are probably the most significant challenges. And the US Supreme Court has already acted, to some extent, on those challenges. And they all relate to extensions to the time to receive ballots after Election Day. So each of those states, Pennsylvania, North Carolina, Wisconsin, an extension was granted for the state to receive a ballot after the close of Election Day. And I'll start with the Pennsylvania case, because that's probably the case that there's the most information about. There, the Pennsylvania Supreme Court granted a three-day extension. So they said that, based on the urgency related to the pandemic and the disruption of the United States Postal Service delivery of mail, the Pennsylvania Supreme Court extended the time to receive ballots from the close of Election Day, 5:00 PM, to the close of November 6th, so a three-day extension to receive ballots. So all ballots would have to be postmarked by the close of Election Day, but they could be received at the county offices up to three days later. So it's not that people could vote later, it's just that the election offices could receive those ballots postmarked by the close of Election Day up to three days later, and they would be counted. Similarly, in the state of North Carolina, the state elections board granted a six-day extension. So the same rules, your ballot had to be postmarked by the end of Election Day, but it could be received by up to six days, or November 9th, after Election Day and be counted. Wisconsin was the same thing, another six-day extension, except Wisconsin, the extension was granted by a federal judge. We'll talk more about that. So the Republicans on the Pennsylvania case, the Republican Party twice sought review of the extension granted by the Pennsylvania Supreme Court. And they asked that voting or counting of those votes in that extension period be suspended, and they were seeking an emergency order suspending the counting of those votes. While that was pending before the US Supreme Court, the state of Pennsylvania, I think that I'm reading tea leaves a little bit here, but the state of Pennsylvania filed a pleading with the Supreme Court saying, well, wait, wait. For all those ballots that we receive in that extension period, we will segregate those. And we will be able to tell in the future what ballots were issued and which way those ballots went, Trump or Biden or whoever, in the future. So you don't have to, I mean, the message being, you don't have to grant an emergency order. This can be sorted out later. And the US Supreme Court voted four to four not to issue the emergency order. Now, when they decide on an emergency order request, they normally don't issue a, you know, opinion going on at length about their reasoning for granting the emergency order. They just either grant it or they don't. And in this case, it was a four to four tie, which meant that the Pennsylvania Supreme Court decision granting the extension remained in place. An interesting note on that, Justice Barrett was on the Supreme Court at that time, but she didn't participate in the decision because she hadn't had sufficient time to acquaint herself with all the filings in the case. Three justices in that case, Thomas, Alito, Gorsuch, did issue opinions, or not opinions, but sort of dissenting views that they felt that the Pennsylvania Supreme Court overstepped their bounds and that the matter should be addressed by the Supreme Court, and they were open to issuing a decision after the election. So it takes four justices to agree to accept a case for review. So you've already got Thomas, Alito, Gorsuch saying, we think this should be reviewed after the election. And now you've got Barrett, who has probably had sufficient time to acquaint herself with the case. So very possibly, the US Supreme Court will review that Pennsylvania decision after the election. Very briefly, North Carolina, sort of in the same boat, a state body, the elections board granting an extension. In the case of Wisconsin, the US Supreme Court threw out that extension because it was granted by a federal judge rather than a state judge or a state body. And here's the reason why. The federal constitution grants state legislatures the authority to make rules governing federal elections. Yes, let me say that again. The federal constitution grants the state legislatures the authority to make rules governing federal elections. And what the Republicans, their challenge, was that this was the Pennsylvania Supreme Court granting an extension, not the Pennsylvania state legislature. And that's why they believe that the Pennsylvania Supreme Court overstepped its authority. On the other hand, the Pennsylvania Supreme Court read the extension based on a provision in the Pennsylvania Constitution that's called the Free and Equal Elections Clause. And that says that elections are to be conducted, and I'm going to quote here from the decision, "Elections are to be conducted in a manner which guarantees, to the greatest extent possible, a voter's right to equal participation in the electoral process, and that it affords courts broad authority to craft meaningful remedies when required." So of course, look, we've got this emergency, once-in-a-century pandemic going on. People's ballots are being delayed, being delivered to the elections offices by problems with the US Post Office, and we're going to grant this several-day extension. So that's, that's sort of the legal lay of the land in Pennsylvania. Similarly, in North Carolina, Wisconsin, the federal judge granted the extension. And so there was really no state action in that state granting an extension, you know, which I think clearly distinguished it from North Carolina and Pennsylvania. So right now, today, the Trump administration filed a motion to intervene in the Pennsylvania case. So I suspect, you know, in that case, my best speculation is that that's going to be reviewed after the election. Whether Pennsylvania proves to be critical or not, or North Carolina, who knows? I'll just briefly mention some of the other challenges. This afternoon, there was a lawsuit filed by the Trump administration in Michigan based on the denial of sufficient access to observe the counting of ballots. And that was also a similar challenge that was filed in Nevada, which is already been dismissed. There was a federal lawsuit, another one in Pennsylvania, filed by the Republican Party, challenging a five-day cure period. So if there was a defect, like you didn't use your secrecy envelope when you mailed in your ballot, they allowed five days to contact the voter and say, is this how you voted? Yes, it is. And they would count the vote. I mean, that challenge is a little odd. Its best estimates from the elections offices in Pennsylvania is there's less than 100 votes that are going to be affected, so much ado about nothing, I think. In Texas, there's a challenge to ballots received through drive-in locations. That's been rejected already by the Texas Supreme Court and a federal judge. So one thing to understand, these actions cannot be filed originally. You can't start out in the US Supreme Court. They've got to go through the state court system or federal lower court system and work their way up to the Supreme Court. But they can do so pretty happily. So it's a little complicated. I hope I've made it clear. And I'd be happy if you got questions on what I've said. I'll try and answer them.
Okay, thank you for that, Bronson. Yeah, any questions from the council? Yeah, it's pretty involved, for sure.
I'm more personal, though. I've got a crow here a little bit. I had two family members elected this election period. My wife was re-elected to the Art Public Utilities Commission, and my daughter-in-law was elected onto the Art County Charter Review Commission. We're stepping up and doing what we can in this democratic process, and I'm very proud of my family members. For allowing me to crow a little bit.
Congratulations. Wonderful, thank you.
Yeah, that's wonderful.
So any questions for the city attorney this evening, council? Okay, again, thank you for that, Bronson.
Thank you.
So next are council comments. Councilmember Boff?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I received a very nice letter from a long-term resident who lives on Pacific Highway. And in the letter, he said, "We can't stop progress, and we don't want to, but noise reduction would be nice." And he goes on to ask if the city would please consider implementing some sort of restrictions on unmuffled compression brakes. It seems that he's hearing more and more of the older trucks, older diesels are using their compression brakes when they come into town, both from over the bridge and coming in near 10th Street. And I'd want to bring this up because I think as we plan for the future, and we are going to grow, that I think this is something we should think about. Many other communities I know have those kinds of restrictions. I'm sure you've seen the signs entering city limits in some communities. So I just wanted to approach the subject tonight, and I would like us to continue talking about it and consider doing something like that. And that's all I have for tonight.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. Going off of what councilmember Boff has said, I used to drive tractor-trailer. I know what the noises that they make. And it wouldn't be, I mean, we could put up signs, but then you have to enforce it. But it's pretty easy to pick out a truck when they're using one. We do have downgrades coming into town, so that's when you would be using them. They are a safety thing. That's the flip side of it, because they save your service breaks. So enough on that. If we want to talk about it, I mean, we can. On a lighter note, Halloween was great. Living on a cul-de-sac, we had kids down here, safely distancing. We put our pre-set bags, sealed bags, out on a table 10 feet from the porch, and we sat on the porch and got to see them. We had about 35 kids, so it sounds like it was a good event. We had great weather, beautiful moon that night as well. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Servini?
Nothing additional to add, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And so after our staff reports, we do have two staff reports this evening. And the first one is the police staff report, and Chief Denny will be presenting.
Okay. Mayor, council. Department-wide patrol statistics, we had 170 calls total, 41 of which were officer-generated or proactive calls. Criminal arrests, we had 11 arrests total for the month, four traffic-related arrests, one DUI collision arrest, one drug-related arrest, one felony assault DB arrest, and four misdemeanor assault DB arrests. An update on our burglaries and vehicle prowls within the city, we've had two residential burglaries and 10 vehicle prowls documented within the city during the month of October. All these crimes were committed and done on two separate nights. Of the 10 vehicle prowls that occurred, nine were left unlocked by their owners, and one was a victim of forced entry. Of the two burglaries, both were unlawful, entry into the garage area. One garage was left open, and the second was accessed by using the garage door opener that was left in an unlocked vehicle. The city of Ridgefield is having the same issues and has believed that the crimes are being committed by the same suspects. As frustrating as these crimes are, the one definitive answer to dramatically reducing crime in the center is for residents to lock their vehicles and homes and stop leaving valuables in plain view. If this had occurred in the month of October, we'd have a reduction of like 36% in crime committed in the center. Reports taken, we had 47 total reports were taken, 37 original reports, and 11 supplemental reports. And on police contacts, we had 114 FI entries completed for any activity that did not result in a report or issuance of a citation or infraction. Traffic stops, we had 70 traffic stops totaling total. Complaints received. We received a complaint of speed violations on northeast Lockwood Creek. We also received complaints regarding parking and licensing violations at various residential locations within the city. The violations were handled on a case-by-case basis and corrected at the time they were reported. Traffic emphasis was focused in the following locations, based on traffic patterns and/or complaints. Northwest 319th Street, I-5 Junction, moving violations and licensing violations. Northwest Pacific Highway, the 1500 block, speed and licensing violations. East 4th Street, Lockwood Creek, 1,000 block to the 2,400 block, speed emphasis. Additionally, the traffic speed trailer was deployed in the following locations for continued speed mitigation. Northwest Lockwood Creek, 1200 block, East 4th Street, 1,000 block, and Northwest Pacific Highway, the 1,000 block. And so community-oriented policing, officers participated in the Center Elementary School Halloween parade on the October 28th. Well-said, focused patrols were conducted in residential areas on October 31st to ensure the safety of the children on Halloween. High-risk calls for service. On October 20th, approximately 17:57 hours, a female resident of La Center came to the police department to report that her estranged husband had tried to strangle her during an altercation and threatened to end her life. Due to manpower shortage of the shift, the claim was investigated with assistance of the Ridgefield Police Department. During the investigation, the husband was in another city at his place of employment where he was contacted by police. Responding agency, the Center Police Department, one sergeant, Ridgefield Police Department, two officers, and one sergeant. Total time invested by LCPD, eight hours, four and a half hours for investigation and arrest, and three and a half hours for report writing and processing of evidence. Clearing disposition, all the conclusion of the investigation, the husband was subsequently arrested and booked on two counts of felony assault and two counts of felony harassment with death threats. And that's all I have, Mayor, unless there's questions. I didn't have an opportunity to include the stats on the report, but these are the highlights of what's going on in the city for the month of October.
Good to you. Thank you for the report. Any questions from the council for Chief Denny?
I'd just like to say, chief, thanks for the work on the speed enforcement. Driving around town, I'm seeing Lockwood Creek. I was standing by the post office the other day. People were flying down there. And also coming off the bridge, heading out of town, people are starting to pick up speed again in there. There was one of the commercial trucks in there. It was, I thought he was going pretty good coming across the bridge, maybe just trying to get momentum up for the hill, but you guys are doing a great job. Just keep it up. There's plenty of opportunities out there.
Thank you. Will do.
Okay, thanks again, chief.
You're welcome.
Before we have this evening is the public work staff report, and Public Works Director Matt Jenkins will be presenting that this evening. Matt?
Good evening, Mayor, council, citizens. I've got the November Public Work Staff Report. I'll start with Public Works Operations, Streets and Facilities. The staff continues to maintain city properties and drainage systems throughout town. And as always, Public Works Crew is continuously monitoring and repairing potholes throughout the city, along with notable road hazards. The community center play structures and restrooms still remain closed due to COVID-19. That continues to provide janitorial for city hall and the community development offices. That staff is looking into other options in regard to sanitation for COVID-19. Public staff is continuing to do right-of-way work throughout the city and along La Center Road. And staff is also preparing the snowplows, brine, and sanding equipment for the upcoming cold weather and making sure everything is ready to go should we hit a cold spell in the climate weather on the roads. and making sure everything is ready to go should we hit a cold spell in the climate weather on the roads. Parks and grounds, mowing is starting to slow down due to the colder temperatures and the wet conditions. Staff continues to maintain trails and paths throughout the city. Unfortunately, battle ground in Clark County work crews remain unavailable. Works is modifying and refining landscape throughout town on the various properties. Personnel side, currently all staff are working normal shifts. Everyone is healthy. And all staff are following appropriate safety precautions for COVID nineteen. On the project side, the reconstruction of the Holly Park concession stand staircase is finally complete than we thought. They were working on it in between other projects and their routine duties, which are, but they got the job done. It's been upgraded from what was initially a residential-style build to actually more of a commercial-style staircase. So it falls within a commercial building code and should be long-term fixed for, you know, several decades. So we're pretty excited about that. And it was a great job done by the Public Works Crew. My hat's off to them. On the wastewater operations side, as far as operations goes, the plant parameters remain well within compliance, the M P D S permit limits still right around ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent removal. Staff is optimizing the plant processes as the weather continues to cool and will continue to go on probably until we hit our coldest point in January and February, and then we'll start the process over again for the B K Labs is performing annual effluent characteristic testing. That's going to go out this Thursday. Hopefully, we'll have results in the next weeks. Bio-sol shipments from Ailana and Kalamah are back to normal weekly deliveries. Though we have to return one to Kalamah because of a low pH. They're going to correct that going forward. On the maintenance side, routine preventative maintenance is always ongoing. Permit-required annual flow meter calibrations have been completed. And, and then no other current maintenance or critical maintenance for this period. On the administrative side, the October discharge monitoring port has been compiled. That's ready to be submitted to the Department of Ecology, and staff is currently working regular shifts, but maintaining social distancing practices, and all staff are available. On the project side, currently no projects. And that leads to the Building Department. Building Department's numbers still remain very strong. They haven't changed or fallen off. We're averaging fifteen stops per day on the inspection side, which leads to about twenty to forty-five inspections per day. Family residential plan reviews times are currently still between two to three weeks for turnaround. And that does still include the three to five days in quarantine. So that's a remarkable number for, for limited staff and high volume that we're receiving. Taking in a hundred and twenty-five plans and applications for single-family residences year-to-date at the time of this report. It's probably more than that now. And inspections will continue to be performed at the builders, builders meeting the social distancing criteria set by the state. We haven't had any problems with local builders. They're all doing a great job following those standards and following L and I standards in regards to COVID nineteen. And all staff are healthy and on normal shifts, but our offices do remain close to the public without an appointment. All I have.
Thank you, Matt. Any questions for Mr. Jenkins this evening?
Matt, this Randy. I did see the stair structure over at the park the other day. The guy did a really good job. That looks, it looks just fancy. It's nice, real nice, whole lot better than what they had.
Yeah, thank you. I'll let him know. I appreciate that.
We got some, we have some craftsmen on our staff. I drove up Stone Creek the day after it opened, and that looks, that work up there looks really nice, too. Let's see, waiting to see how it does in the wintertime. But it'll look good. One thing of concern, though, is West Tenth Street. There was a contractor in the street, pretty deep on, and I was, I drove by it a couple of times. I'd go to Woodland. And I'm not real pleased with the paving he did. It's already started to subside along with the paving that we did on Tenth that we had a contractor come in and do. I think it's a problem we have with the railroad as well. If they try to fill a deep hole with one patch, it sinks. And on the railroad, we have to make sure they half-fill it and enroll it and compact it, and then they do the second filling on top, then we don't have a problem with it subsiding. But if we could just check that, I'm concerned because it ends up being a problem we have to, the city has to pay for later when the contractor doesn't really do a up-to-stuff job.
Absolutely. I believe Tony Cooper will be following up on that. The repair was for a citizen's lateral contractor. And we are going to circle back on that.
Yeah, I don't, it did look like it was edge-sealed, and it also looked like it was starting to subside. But then the work that the city had done back closer to Aspen is starting to subside as well. So if you could check it out, I know it's the wrong time of the year to play with asphalt, but I just hate for the city to get left holding the bag on a repair later.
Absolutely.
Thanks. If you let me know how it comes out, I appreciate it.
Yep, will do.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Jenkins this evening, Council? Okay. Thanks again, Matt.
Thank you.
So that is, that are all the agenda items that we have this evening. On the agenda is the motion to adjourn, if I could get a motion.
Okay, I moved it to adjourn.
Second.
They moved it second to adjourn the meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Council. Thank you, everyone, for attending the meeting this evening.
Okay, thanks. Good night, everyone.